Being 6 o'clock on Monday, September 23rd, I will call the Board of Selectmen meeting to order. And as a reminder, this meeting is being broadcast and recorded. Just a quick announcement that the Fire Department is not going to be joining us this evening at 6:15, so we're going to remove that from the agenda until they let us know. Brendan, if you want to go into your Town Administrator's Report.
Sure.
So, the first item on my report may or may not have further discussion tonight. Where we left off was the Board was going to look at potential changes to the position description and if there were any other questions that the Board wanted to make sure got asked during the eventual interview process. I don't know if anyone has additional input on that tonight. We're going to pick this up again anyway in November after Fall Town Meeting.
Nothing for me.
So, I do have a couple of comments, but I haven't put them into email. So, as far as the job description, Brendan, the only thing that got me was the section on liaison with the Essex School Department. Can that be corrected to the Manchester Essex School?
Yeah, that's a holdover that wasn't caught. Yep.
And, so, a couple of things that I had for notes on it, and I'm not saying that they have to be put in, but just some thoughts. Managing of the department personnel type of things. Collaboration with other departments. Example, the DPW or, and, let's see, something, because I didn't see it, but a public relations, they are the face.
Mm-hmm.
And then crime prevention was a thought that I said, "Oh, is that in there?" You know, like, trying to see if there's things that we can do.
Okay, and you'll send me some more detail.
I'll send you a, write myself a note to send you a note.
Okay. Next item is the preliminary draft of the Fall Town Meeting warrant.
And I know that the FinCon is coming up later, but if we go through this, we may end up being able to speed that meeting up a little bit by not having certain articles that we need to discuss.
Okay. So, if I start to go through the warrant, we have an article on the Fire Department tanker truck. And my understanding is the Fire Department is perhaps going to be able to continue to utilize the truck they have now for a little while longer? Is that?
That is correct. They are removing the tanker, and they would like to move the tanker truck to long-range potential items.
Got it. Then, there was the thought of a new ambulance for the Fire Department, because the lead time for a new ambulance is almost three years out right now. Are they interested in that, Ruth?
I spoke with the Fire Chief this morning, and he would like to keep the ambulance on there.
Okay.
And now, the ambulance is a grant, or are they going after a grant?
The ambulance is funded by the ambulance fund, so it's, they're not asking for free cash or debt exclusion. They're taking money from the fund that is paid for by the insurance billables, and they're using that ambulance fund to buy the next ambulance.
With respect to a police cruiser, I know that Chairman Harris reached out to the Chief about different options there, and maybe we'll hear more about that when they come to the meeting. Water Department pickup truck with plow, they're estimating $73,000, and that would come from the water free cash. Council on Aging Van, I did hear from Tess today, that can come off, and I think maybe put it into, like, Tier Two Annual Town Meeting. Does that make sense?
That makes sense.
All right.
And I'm sure that she's still exploring working with Manchester for a van and not looking.
She is, but they don't have any information on it as yet, and it's not going to be in time.
No, we'll do annual Tier Two.
The Shellfish Boat, at this point in time, I mean, our motor is relatively new, and we did make some minor repairs to the existing boat. The Shellfish Constable, at this point in time, is saying that he is fine with running the boat as it stands. It's, again, maybe something we could put on annual Tier Two or somewhere else, wherever.
I'm kind of thinking we should put it out further, maybe, or, let's put it on annual Tier Two with a relook for fall when we get to free cash next year.
Well, we could just put it out to next fall, and he'll do another season.
Let's do a season. What do you think?
So, well, so, my only question is, Billy's saying it's fine. What if somebody else comes in and says, "No, this is a piece of garbage, and I'm going to get stuck out there"? That's, I feel like Billy's very confident in his, him using it versus if somebody else was using it.
So, the boat itself, it's an aluminum skiff. It's 30 years old, so we know that it's 30 years old. But the Merc Cruiser on the back of it is a 2017, I believe. So, it's, the motor has life.
Okay.
It's the boat, and, I mean, it's aluminum. It'll last. It's just showing its age, so I don't see any reason why we can't get through another season. And if, the nice thing, Alva, we actually priced boats when it was in the shop this past, before the season started, and an entire complement boat in trailer was $12,000, brand new. So, it's not a huge ticket item if we had an emergency and had to replace it. We also had the option for our lake boat, that's not being put in the lake the last two seasons, could potentially be used. Not that you would want to take a nice Boston Whaler and use it as a clammy, or, you know, Shellfish boat, but it's an option if we needed a boat.
The next is the library ramp structural repairs. That'd be a total of $6,000, and we can talk about that with the Finance Committee. The client computing connection boxes, $7,500. The Board talked about that.
And, and I'm sorry, the client computing?
So, we have a...
What did we call it? Did we call it client computing?
It's, uh, Client Connection Devices, I believe, in the warrant. Client Connection Hardware, Article 10.
Oh, okay. Okay, go ahead.
Water Supply Well Funding. This is something that the Chairman of the Board of Public Works suggested, that once we go out to bid for the third time now to try to do the well project with the ARPA money, we believe that we'll have enough to do the base bid, but they're also going to put in two bid alternates, as the Selectmen know. And this would be money to help do those if we don't have quite enough in ARPA funding. I think the Finance Committee has some things to ask about this one as well. Tobacco Lake Study, we did hear back from a Selectman in Hamilton who indicated that she will work to try to get some funding from Hamilton Town Meeting. Right now, the Lake Association is saying that they, they would like to see each town do $10,000 to $15,000 a year, because if it's 20 from the state and we both did 15, that would be 50 total, and there's, they're thinking it's a two-year study, a total of 100. But I know that the Board discussed 10.
So, can I ask you, as far as the watershed group, is everybody who lives on, on the lake a part of that? Like, do they?
They're eligible, they're eligible to be, but they don't, they're not required to be.
So, that's, that's why I'm asking, because I'm like, oh, wait, so this $10,000 is going to be spread out to the whole town, even though the whole town doesn't use the lake? And you'll hear complaints about the fact that they can't use it in the summertime during the Y, you know, when the Y has it? So, it's just a thought, like, is, is the Y contributing at all to it? Is the, is there somebody, some other group? I, you know, I know that, that property that was, the other camp that's no longer?
Camp Menora.
Yeah, that's no longer?
That's houses now, I believe.
Okay, all right. I, I just wanted to make sure it's fairly distributed. It shouldn't, you know, again, it's another item that's being distributed throughout the whole town, but the whole town doesn't use it.
Right. I mean, it is studying the whole lake and the whole Airwife Brook, but if you don't use those resources...
Right.
But I think the argument could be made that not everybody in town uses the school system. Not everybody uses Canomo Point. So, I think we just need to say that it's within the boundaries of Essex, and we want to keep it beautiful for years to come, so that it is a resource. I mean, I think there's lots of things I don't use that I would love to use or that I pay for, and it's just an important piece of our town.
The special purpose funds that we usually fund at the Fall Town Meeting, which I think I'm out of order on the, oh, there it is. Yeah, Article 16, right? The Finance Committee usually gives recommendations as to what should go into those funds based on what the free cash number ends up being, but we don't have it certified yet. It's in front of the Department of Revenue right now for certification. So, we'll have discussion with the Finance Committee about that. Then, the, I want to find, maybe I went past it. Articles 12 and 13, stabilization funds for the Water Enterprise Fund and the Sewer Enterprise Fund. Is that something that the Board is in favor of? I know that the Finance Committee will want to talk about that.
So, for me, and we've, let me just make sure that we've gone through. Bear with me one second. Okay, those are my next. So, Article 12 and 13, we had asked the DPW Commissioners to join the Board for discussion on these two articles, and I know that they said that they were too busy to join us and not discuss them. So, my only question is the funding source. So, how do they propose that they're going to fund the stabilization accounts?
My understanding is that they would add to the water rate and the sewer rate so that there's enough money to operate each of the enterprise funds, but then, in a planned way, they would be taking money and putting it into these stabilization funds.
So, they're going to raise the rates? So, in my...
In addition to the work that's going to be done for Gloucester and raised?
That's just about where I was going to go. I was going to say that until we know what, how Gloucester shakes out and what our portion is and how we fund that, I'm not sure that raising user rates at this time would be in anyone's best interest. I think we need to know what our final betterment interest number is. I keep saying over $2 million, and we know that it's a huge number. We need to know how we're going to use those funds to offset the cost of Gloucester, and it's going to impact our sewer, our user rates. So, I don't think we should, I'm not in favor of leaving these articles on. I'd like to see them removed, and I'm not in favor of raising rates until we know how Gloucester impacts us. Alva, how do you feel about that?
I agree.
All right, and where would you want them to go for now?
I would put them on long-range potential.
You'll see a note in the warrant. I don't know of any community preservation requests, so I don't, I don't have an article, I won't have an article for it. Then, there is replenishment of the sewer maintenance line and the water maintenance line items. And this is because we sometimes have something happen within one of those systems, and it clears out what they had put aside for the, for the year, like if there's a water break or sewer break. That has not happened this time through. It's up to the Board as to whether you want to leave them on there in case, just in case you need it. But I could take them off to streamline this.
For me, I would rather see more money go into the Finance Reserve Fund for the emergency versus in a specific fund like this.
The difference is, if you use the Reserve Fund, you're spending it from the general fund on an enterprise.
Okay.
But we do have Article 23, which talks about amending any article, any budget, including the enterprise funds, so I think we can take them off.
Okay, let's...
We just have it on there perennially, because most of the time, something comes up, but I, this is the year that I haven't seen anything.
Okay, I'm fine with removing them. I think you're on the first floor. I think, I think that your committee is meeting on the first-floor conference room, and I think I'll see you in an hour and 15 minutes.
The next is the Sewer Grinder Pump. The Board of Public Works, Department of Public Works, they've been steadily making progress toward replacing all of the original grinder pumps with new units. They're, depending on what the retained earnings or sewer free cash comes through at, they'd like to have some more money for that. And again, it wouldn't be coming from the general fund.
That makes sense.
Then, the Finance Committee's Reserve Fund, they'll talk to you about that. Right now, we know that almost $10,000 has been transferred out to the Hubber Masters' budget so that the moorings could be removed prior to dredging. That can be funded perhaps by the Dredging Match Fund that we have, or even the Water Waste Fund, and that's something that I'm sure we'll talk about with them.
So, Brendan, on this, just kind of as a segue about the dredging project and the reason for replacement, have you seen the letter that's going out to, for renewal for the mooring holders to inform them that they need to pay back the cost, the $350?
I, I worked on some suggested language, but I never saw the final letter that the Hubber Masters sent out.
Okay.
He said that he did send it out.
I'll ask for that final language, so we can see what it says. Thank you.
He may have sent it through the mooring info program. I'm not sure how he got it out there. Then, the OPEB Trust Fund, which is Other Post-Employment Betterment, Benefits, which is basically retiree healthcare. We have to make ground on that year by year so that we can get to a fully funded state. The idea is that if we have $3 to $4 million in that fund, then the employee, the town's share of employee healthcare will be self-funded from the interest. So, we'll talk to the Finance Committee about what they think should go in there this fall.
Because we've been putting short money in there, correct? Like, $50,000?
There's been a couple of...
Couple of really big ones.
Yeah, like 200 and, 200?
200, I think, is the most we've ever, yeah.
Twice, I think, yeah.
Okay, so, we're moving up.
We're trying to make ground on it. Then, there's an article there for whether or not there needs to be any changes to the wage and salary scale. One potential change could be if, if you're going to move the Constable, a Shellfish Constable from salaried to hourly, that would have to be reflected here, and it would need to be in advance of January 1, 2025.
So, help me understand that. So, there's this bill that may pass?
It, it has passed, but it may be legally challenged. It's federal law, and as of, as of January 1, 2025...
So, the federal changed this, but they didn't change anything else? I'm, I'm so confused.
This is a change to, specifically to the, the amount of money you can pay someone and call them a salaried employee.
Okay.
And they want to elevate that to $58,000 roughly.
And then, our options are either, one, that Shellfish Constable becomes an hourly.
And you, and you don't...
And then, we pay them overtime if they do overtime.
If they, if he pay, if he works overtime, or you could just say, "Don't work any overtime."
Well, I mean, we all understand in, in the Shellfish world, May to October is probably times where you could have two tides in a day and...
That's possible, yeah. So, that's one option. The other option would just be say, "Well, you're still a salaried employee like you are now, but you're making at least the minimum," which is then going to go up again six months later.
My feeling is we leave it, turn it to an hourly, and then see whether or not we need to move it into, you know, whether it's...
Right. And, and how much overtime is being used?
Right.
Because you have $8,000 a play right there, and that's a lot of overtime, so...
A lot of overtime. And there's more than one person?
No, because the, the deputies are already hourly employees, and they don't, they only work a few hours a week.
Great, but then, what I'm saying is, does the person who's 40 hours need, actually 30-something hours?
No, 40 hours, Billy, yeah.
Do they need to work? Can a part-time a person do it instead of an overtime?
If, if he has to work over, yeah, possibly, yes.
As long as they're not on their full-time day job?
Yeah.
So, they would have to look at that.
Possibly, yes. So, right now, I'll set it up to convert over. I'll just compute what the hourly rate would be. The other thing would be is if the Fire Department does need anything added, this would be the article. We add it in, but we have to hear from them yet. With respect to adjusting any of the operating budgets, we definitely have to add funding in the town clerks and assistant town clerk salary lines and the Shellfish Constable Deputy line, because the deputies have been working for the Constable during his medical leave. So, those are definites. Electricity will increase in accordance with the new rate that will start at the beginning of the calendar year, and that has to be accounted for in each one of the budgets that carries an electricity line item. And then, we have a question as to whether the Conservation Commission wants to convert the money for a town employee conservation agent to an expense line, and they would hire a contracted service provider to be the agent. So, we'll, we'll see on that.
So, on this here, you have unpaid bills, $1,500?
Yes.
Social Security underpayment? How does that work?
The $1,500 is for just regular old bills that didn't get paid on time. So, if, if a vendor paid, sent us a bill for something that happened before June 30th, but we didn't get it until two months later, and the fiscal year was already closed, we're not allowed to pay the bill until a town meeting votes, and an annual will be four-fifths majority, and a special will be nine-tenths majority, to pay that bill. The social security underfunding, we believe that the town meeting had a vote to actually pick that funding up in the past, and there may still be sufficient money in that fund. We're computing right now whether that's the case, and if there's anything else that's needed, it would, it would go here. But we're waiting for the Treasurer Collector to understand whether there's sufficient funds in place.
Okay, so, that's not, it's not like, "Oh, my God, we found that we underpaid social security."
We did with respect to one person, and a portion of that, for years, that were covered by our current payroll vendor, has already been submitted. The portion that was covered by our previous payroll vendor has not yet been submitted, because it has to be, like, manually figured right now.
And, and did we find this in an audit? Or, did we find it with the...
I believe the previous town accountant found the issue, and we've been working through, through it. And now, the new town accountant and the Treasurer Collector are trying to, and that's, that's it. It's part of one person's, it's not a whole bunch of different people. General Stabilization Fund, I think the Finance Committee is probably going to say that we're going to take this off, because we already have roughly 5% of the town's operating budget in the stabilization fund, and that's really our goal, so they probably won't add any more. And we talked about the unpaid bills. Are there any other questions right now?
So, my only other question is what we've put for Article 1. I, is it something we want to talk at, at the beginning, or should it be something a little bit further down?
I think the reason we did it at the beginning is because it says people are funneling in, and it probably isn't going to be a lot of discussion.
Okay.
Do you like it at the beginning, or do you like it at the end?
It's not that I like it at the end. I just feel like that first question is to be, should be more housekeeping, because as long as there's 30 people in the room and we can get a housekeeping thing off the table would be great, versus something that may have discussion, that, that would be my only. So, you guys can decide. I, I'm not, I'm not loving it, number one, but I'm fine.
Okay.
And I wanted to bring to your attention that the Conservation Commission suggested that they might have a wetlands bylaw ready to potentially go on this warrant, but I haven't seen a draft of that yet, and you really don't have much more than your next meeting, because after that, on the 21st, you're signing the warrant. So, I don't know what you have to say about that.
So, my only question is, if it's not on the fall, and they feel that they need it ASAP, would a special meeting have to...
I was at the Conservation Commission meeting when this was discussed, and it's not going to be the eight- or nine-page bylaw that they actually were trying to do last fall. And then, when we ran into a second night, they decided to table it. It's not that at all. They're looking to put a bylaw on the books that just outlines their fees and any potential fines. So, it's, it's going to be either a chart or a graph or something that just talks about fees and fines. It's not going to be a nine-page bylaw. I think it's going to be this big.
An enforcement?
Some sort of an enforcement, yeah.
And I would put it right after the Planning Board articles, probably. So, we'll see what happens between now and your next meeting with that. That's what I had for the Fall Town Meeting Warrant. The final item in the report has to do with the Metropolitan Planning Organization Causeway Study. You have in your package is a, a write-up on that, and the personnel from the MPO spoke with Selectman Fippen and I about this project. You may have seen that the traffic counting equipment has already been deployed, so that was one promise they made. Another promise they made was that they would actually write up a scope of services for study on the problem that will be future flooding on the Causeway. It's, it's already floods, and it's going to get worse. On that front, we went over the draft scope with them, and they're now putting it into a standard format that MPO uses for this type of study, and they're going to put more detail in it, and we'll be able to show you that. But they're still very optimistic that they will probably actually be able to implement the scope of services with federal money that they have starting this fall. So, that's a great jumpstart on the, the Causeway, and we'll go from there. I don't know if you have any questions on that right now.
No, I think it's fabulous. Alva, do you have any questions?
So, basically, my only question was, is, was this done by a grant? Did I miss that part?
It will, it will be, yeah, we haven't spent any money on it. So, they're using their own, their own budget right now to do the, the traffic counting, and they're using their own staff time without charging us anything to do the scope of services.
Boston Region MPO is using their own money?
Yeah. Yep. And it's because we got involved with a survey that they did, and we explained that we had this challenging thing, and they said, "You know what? We want to start attacking these types of problems, and we think yours is a good one to start with." And so, if, in fact, they do want to implement it, they're going to get 100% of the money from federal funds that they expect to have.
And then, the only other question is, so, the outcomes would be actionable? I mean, they'll, they'll provide us with things that either we have to do?
They're going to come up with recommendations.
Perfect.
And since it's a state highway, a lot of it will be coming back to DOT, saying, "Okay, yeah, you have a lot of roadways to look at. That's probably why your plan right now is only very, very generalized. Well, here's a very specific review of our problem, and we'd like you to start working with us on it."
So, what I'm seeing is that this is September to January, which is probably our slower months as far as traffic on the Causeway.
Yeah.
But it's also our high flooding months. And then, my question is, do they take into account, like, how does somebody from Gloucester get to 95 North? If they don't go through Essex, you know what I mean? Can they get the, do they look at that, you know, like, extended beyond just the Causeway?
Yeah, they're looking at it on a regional context as well, and they're going to use two models to look at the regional implications. It's actually going to be quite a detailed study, which will be the first time someone's really digging into, "How do we fix this problem, or how do we address this problem?" DOT, as you know, has traditionally said, "Until the people that have businesses that flank either side of the Causeway decide that they don't want to be there anymore, we're not going to elevate the road and cause them to have problems with their businesses." And that's where it's been left.
And could they come back and say, "Okay, so, from this street address, from this address on Main Street to this address is where the, the raise in the, you know, raising of the road would be..."
They're going to show you what would be something that would solve the problem, but it might not solve the problem for the people that, that live on either side of the Causeway. So, it's, it's very difficult, and I'm glad that we have someone that's finally saying, "You know what? These problems are going to be all over the place. Let's start looking at it." So, I think it's, it's very positive.
So, Lisa, can I just pause you for one quick second? We have Natasha and Katie in the room, and I know we're going to be with you for a while. Do you mind if I take them out of order? Thank you.
Do you think I bring my maps in while I'm doing this?
I would love you to do that. Natasha and Katie, I don't know if you need to join us. Alva may have questions, I don't know. So, we're going to just, I'm going to go out of order on the agenda, okay? So, under Licensing, page 3, Alva, we have four one-day wine and malt for the Essex Historical Society and Shipbuilding Museum for use on October 19th, November 9th, December 7th, and another December 7th, because they're in two different locations. Do you have any questions before?
I did not.
Okay. Okay. I will make a motion to approve the four one-day wine and malts.
So moved?
Second.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll get this meeting thing done.
And then I have, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. I have seven one-day entertainment licenses for the Essex Historical Society and Shipbuilding Museum as listed on pages two, I'm sorry, three and four of the agenda. Do you have any questions, Alva?
I do not.
I do not as well. I will make a motion to approve the seven one-day entertainment licenses.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Ladies are all set. Thank you.
There was a question about the grant?
Grant, yes. Okay. So unanticipated, we'll?
Well, no, no, it's on the agenda.
Oh.
Okay, so on the agenda is, uh, let's see.
Oh, I see it. The middle of the page, page two, board consideration of an application.
Yeah, so the, the Mass Cultural Council has offered $15,000 again to the town. KD had asked whether the board would support running the arts, arts and cultural festivals, festival again.
Yep.
And that's what we have on the agenda. My understanding is that KD has another suggestion.
Yeah, so the, after we got this on the agenda, the district management committee was able to meet. We talked about our web presence and it was suggested that maybe the Visit Essex Mass site is adopted by the cultural council and managed by the Havoc Heirs for a yearly stipend fee that would go to them. They would step down off the district management team to avoid conflict of interest because then they're being paid as a contractor. They wanted a very modest amount. It was like 2835, I believe, so a little bit less than three grand for managing the calendar for the whole community and just the general visit page.
I think that I would, do we have something written up that we can look at and discuss? How urgent is this to?
Well, the, the only thing I thought about that was if you have something that gets supported by a grant and then you don't get a grant the next year, now you have this website that needs supporting.
Right.
I know that the, the cultural festival was very well received and you probably could spend all the money within that, correct? The 15,000?
Oh, yeah. Easy, easily.
Right. So if the board wants to just move forward with that, that's what we were looking for tonight, although there was an alternative presented.
And I was extremely in favor and excited to see this again. My only other question for you is, could the cultural council use the town's webpage to keep their calendar on our page?
The cultural council could have a page, because that's a town board. They could have a page on the town website that they could keep a calendar on very easily.
Yeah, I think they were trying to do that and it didn't work really well and I don't really know all the ins and outs because I don't do that.
Yeah, I don't, no one ever came to us if that was, if that was the case, but.
Yeah, but.
It's possible and we're moving to a new website platform in the, almost towards the end of this calendar year and that might be another thing that they could take a look at because now there's a new, new platform and it might be more intuitive.
Okay, yeah. I'm, I'm just happy accepting the 15,000 for the, for the cultural district.
And it was successful and I think everyone was thrilled and my concern is, as it is with all departments in grant funding, which is that if that grant isn't available ongoing, it becomes a problem. So I think, for me, I think I'm more in favor of sticking with the 15,000 grant for the festival as it is.
And so at the festival, I'm assuming you, you raise money also?
No.
Oh, you don't?
No, but it is not a fundraising event.
Okay.
It is to actually giving money to the artists.
Okay.
So I will entertain a motion to support the application for the Massachusetts Cultural Council's Fiscal Year 25 Cultural District Investment Grant Program in the amount of $15,000 for the Essex Historical Society and Shipbuilding Museum to again hold the Essex Arts and Cultural Festival.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. Have a good night.
So can I just ask a question while?
Yes.
It's ready. Regarding the new platform that you're going to use for the town, is, is it?
Whatever, yeah.
Is there a calendar feature that, because I do feel like all of these malt and liquor licenses should be on a calendar where somebody can go and say, what's the entertainment in us, you know, in Essex?
So we have a calendar feature even on the current platform, but they're not recommending that we do new things until they do the migration because that adds more to migrate?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
So it's possible, I mean, we would have to ask Pam to, when she does the agenda and then something gets approved, throw it on there.
Well, and I just feel like, so there's a thing to me that feels like, you know, if there's, I'm working, if I'm a policeman, I'm working the weekend, I can look and see, oh, we've got events at three different venues that have gotten approved, I should know about those things. Because you're not going to go and look at historical.
Minutes.
Minutes.
Sure. So after migration, which, so we, we can easily put something like that.
I just would like something to be able to look and go, oh, yeah, that's right, that's going on this week.
So you click on the Saturday and go, oh, the brewery has a concert and Rivers Bend has a wedding and Woodman's has a wedding.
Right.
So you know where things are in town.
And the other thing is, is that if somebody gets their request 60 days ahead of time and 30 days, six more people come on, not the.
You may not approve it.
You, you may think twice before approving all of them.
Okay. Lisa, thank you for joining us and thank you for your beautiful maps. Did you get a new plotter by chance?
Did what?
Did you get a new plotter?
We did.
I hadn't heard about that.
See the big smile on her face?
It's, it's been amazing. It's, it's made such a difference. In addition to having the full-size maps that you can look at like this and we'll have at the forum and we'll have at town meeting and whatever, and I've had them at all the workshops, but I was able to also print half-size maps, which are nice little 18 by 22 maps and all the planning board members and Bill will have those, so.
Fantastic.
And I can print them for anyone else who wants them to. Not everyone in town, but anyone official.
And Val Masard is online with us, just to let you know in case you have any questions for Val, she's joining us too.
So Val's on, okay.
She is, yes.
Okay, awesome. So I'm just, I don't want to take too much of your time because you know most of this. I'm just going to give you the reader's digest of what will be the long format on Wednesday night at the public forum and mainly to highlight what the articles are and see if you guys have questions. So the, the background for the whole bylaw update project came in before 2020 even as residents complaints were increasing about commercial uses in adjacent properties in residential neighborhoods. So as you know, in May 2021, the Board of Selectmen proposed a moratorium on change of use from residential open properties to business or industrial properties. And at town meeting in May 2021, that was overwhelmingly supported, easily getting the two-thirds vote that any bylaw changes need. And then it's been extended twice since then, also with very broad support. I do want to clarify and something that I want to make sure is clear at the public forum also is that the moratorium vote by town meeting is really, it's a mandate to the planning board. So it's, we're working right now as the planning board in developing proposals for residential districts and the other changes that we've made for the town residents. This is not a town sort of instigated or driven process. This is basically the selectmen asked town meeting if they were concerned about this, town meeting said yes, and since then the planning board has been working on it with the help of the selectmen. And I say with the help of the selectmen, you guys basically worked to get us the two different MAPC grants that helped us restructure the bylaw in May of 2023 and do a lot of public outreach, get a lot of feedback. We've had a lot of survey feedback even before this past cycle when planning board did our survey. And that's all sort of information that we've carried forward in developing the different proposals that we have at the past town, three town meetings and now at Fall Town Meeting this year. So I just want to clarify that this is a response to concerns of town residents and so the, the whole point of this process is that we bring this proposal to town residents and see whether they like it or not, so. And we've tried to tailor something that we think they will like in that we did a survey to understand what kind of business uses people would or would not like in their neighborhoods. And in addition to that survey, which was actually really helpful, and I'll get to that in a sec because one of the sheets that I handed you discusses that or addresses that, we also did this use map, which based on the assessors codes, has collected all of the uses that the assessors use to categorize properties, whether commercial, industrial, different types of residential, open space, developable, non-developable land, civic land, things like that. So this is all online, it's all detailed and based on what's found on the assessors map. We use this as sort of a starting point to understand the areas that are commercially built out versus those that are not as commercially built out and are more primarily residential. We use that to help inform where we would propose residential districts. So with this information and with the survey responses, which are on the second sheet that I handed you, it shows three different, well, back up a little. We're proposing two different types of residential district. Village residential, which is the purple areas on the map here, and those are all closer to the already established downtown district. And then there are rural residential districts, which are more in the outlying areas of Essex, Aljon Wise down southern, out parts of Eastern Lufkin and some parts down around the lake. So there are three village areas sort of separate on the map there and the responses as you can see, the green code means that at least two-thirds of the people supported that particular use and yellow means at least a majority supported it. So you can see in the village areas, there was a lot more broad support for different kinds of businesses, not all types of businesses, but a number of businesses in the village areas. And in the rural areas, there was really very little support for anything outside of an art and craft studio and a bed and breakfast. So that helped to sort of guide where we drew the districts and what we're proposing as allowable uses in those districts. So with that information, we, like I said, drew the districts. So the other important thing to highlight here is that, as you know, a year ago in November, we established the general use district, which basically codified the 98% of Essex that's not in the downtown district or at one of the Canemaw Point districts into this general use district where all uses were still allowed the way they've always been and that didn't change anything on the ground, it just drew a line around that and made it an official district. So when you look at the Essex map, anything in white remains in the general use district. So there's still a lot of property that will essentially have no restrictions placed on it through the process of proposing and implementing the residential zoning districts if they pass. So it's important to keep in mind, there's a white areas that are still available for all uses the way they are now. So with that in mind, what we're looking at for the two types of residential districts, village and rural, is in the chart here, this is kind of a summary of the allowable uses that we've been working towards. This will all be incorporated into the bylaw language for the two sections that would be proposed. The way our bylaw has been restructured, each zoning district has a section in the bylaw that outlines all the different characteristics of that area. So for example, the language that would start off, the village residential zoning district is, "The purpose of the village residential use district is to preserve the downtown village feel of a small rural community while allowing existing business uses to continue or change and allowing residential property to be converted to business property through the special permit process while still protecting residential neighborhoods by regulating the scale and impact of new businesses and encouraging similarly scaled residential uses." So in a nutshell, what we're proposing in the village district is obviously anything that is on the ground at the time a bylaw passes is a vested right. It's called a pre-existing condition, a pre-existing use, and those are, they have vested rights in perpetuity. What we're proposing is if a, in the village district, we're also going to be proposing in a separate article, a definition for a village business which is smaller than just anything as a business. So picture something that's between anything and home occupation, so something that's scaled to the neighborhood that it would sit in with regard to parking, traffic lights and all the things that would sort of permeate beyond the boundaries of that particular property. So we're going to propose a village business definition and allow village businesses by right in the downtown district, by right for an established commercial property and through the special permit process for an existing residential property. So this still allows business room to grow in all of the purple village districts, but does that through the special permit process so that there can be, we can make sure that there are guardrails around what is actually put on, put in place so that it fits with the residential scale of the village neighborhoods. So that is the essence of the village residential district. The rural residential district is actually simpler in that existing commercial business, existing businesses would obviously remain in perpetuity with their vested rights. They would have the ability to expand and/or change the commercial use of that property to something else, again, through the special permit process. So again, we could make sure that if a business was changing its particular type of business use, that it still met the, the qualities of the rural residential district that we're looking to maintain. And again, the purpose of the rural residential use district is to provide a residential zoning district that allows residential and agricultural uses, including pre-existing business and light industrial uses that are vested as required by Mass General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 6. So that's actually pretty much it. It's, it's a lot of work, but it's pretty cut and dried. There's what's shown on the map as the areas and then the bylaw governs what the uses are. At this time, we're not considering any dimensional changes. It could be because of where the village areas are and because they're generally smaller lots that at some point we come back and revisit the dimensional standards there, the same way that the planning board changed the dimensional standards for the downtown district, but that's not on the table right now. This is all just about uses. The maps are still a working, working document. They're not, until you guys sign the bylaw with these maps attached, I mean, the warrant, sorry, until you sign the by, the warrant with these maps attached, they're not final. So the planning board has, through the workshop process, gotten feedback from people and anytime someone makes a suggestion, a comment, wants to see a change, the board considers it and we vote on each of those and decide whether to make the change to the map or not. So based on the forum on Wednesday night, I'm hoping and expecting we do get some feedback and then at our following planning board meeting on the 2nd of October, we'll be reconsidering some of those suggestions and we may make some changes to the map. But the, coming out of the meeting on the 2nd, we expect to have it fully finalized. And then also tomorrow, meeting, a Zoom meeting with Amy Crossall from KMP to start to look at the language and the map itself. I have a whole list of questions for her. So she's going to be sort of vetting what we're doing and then after the 2nd, between the 2nd and our final meeting on the 16th, which is before you sign it on the 21st, we'll make any tweaks that KMP wants to see in what we're proposing. So summary, we'll actually have three, three articles on the warrant. One's going to be updates to definitions because at last town meeting, we added a number of special permit categories and now that they're in the bylaw, we want to follow that up with definitions of what those are in addition to some others that Val has suggested just to start to tighten things up and make sure that anything that's discussed in our bylaw actually has a definition in the beginning. The second article would be adding village business as a use in Chapter 6, 4, which is permitted uses. So just to describe that, it's going to feel like the way home occupation is described as far as the effects on the neighborhood. And then the third article will be both districts in one article. And the thought there is we don't want to vote on the two districts separately, we want to sort of piggyback the whole thing together and say yes or no for districts or not.
Can you explain that again? So you're going to do the definitions and then the second one is what?
It's, it's going to be a section in 6-4, which is permitted uses, and we're going to define what a village business is because village business is a souped-up home occupation or it's, it's, we're going to categorize, because right now the definition of business is really anything commercial and there's no limitations on it, but we're going to put limitations, some guardrails around what a village business is that keeps it because we're going to permit these village businesses to continue to develop in the village district. So the guardrails there are just to keep it in scale with the neighborhood where any particular village business would be proposed.
But if you have a definitions article, wouldn't it go in there? This is a separate place in the bylaws for this?
Exactly, yes. It's, Section 6-4 is our chapter on permitted uses, our section on permitted uses.
Whereas the first article is just about definitions.
Definitions go in Section 6-2, which is, it's, Section 6-2 is the whole chapter, the whole section with definitions.
And then the third will be the actual vote on both districts altogether?
Right. So the, in that, in that article will be the language for two new sections in the bylaw that define the village and the residential district, just like we did for the general use district. We had a whole section that we added to the bylaw to codify that. There'll be. that. There'll be two new sections, one for village, one for rural, and the maps will get attached to those as well.
Okay. Alva, do you have any questions?
It's a lot. And Lisa, on this thing here, the V1, the V2, the V3, and the R, I'm assuming R stands for rural?
Right.
And so on your maps, do you have?
So it's, it's 1, 2, and then 3 over there.
And they're all purple?
They're all purple. That's the 3. So it's, it's basically an area on either end of the existing downtown district, and then sort of out western and Calley Road as a third village district.
So I guess I'm just wondering whether or not that should be defined, if you're going to be passing this out at town meeting?
No, we're not. I'm not going to pass that out at town meeting, because that, at that point, this is information to inform you about how we got to this point. But when we get to town meeting, we're going to be at that point. So if we do anything, it would be lumping all the village districts together and keeping the rural separate. Because we did have originally the rural district separated. We originally had three types. We had a suburban residential district too, and then that was just too much. So we, and when we laid it out, it became very clear that the suburban district actually belonged either in rural or in, or in village. So we reform, we reorganized things at that point.
Can you ask, when you talk to Council, can you ask what the options are for representing the map? Because it could be black and white in the warrant. It could be that we have to show a color page in the warrant that we hand out, or it could be that it's just something that's referenced, maybe a black and white page in the warrant, but then there's something on the website.
Or a link that...
Yeah. Maybe work through that with her, because there's a practical implication there.
Right. Yeah. No, yeah, you can't publish that, publish this, fold out in the warrant.
Right. So see what she says there, what the options are.
Yeah. Because we can, I mean, we can just take the outlines and turn it into something that's black and white at a smaller scale. Or if it's something that's referenced, because I plan to have these at town meeting, and we'll have, we'll talk about logistics later, but projection and all that. But yeah, for the actual, what goes in the bylaw and what goes in the warrant.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Even describing it so that it says, you know, here's the downtown district, here's the V1 that's this, and here's the V2 that's this, and here's the, so that, because people know roads, if you say from here to here.
Alva, if you get close enough to that map, you can actually see that all laid out.
But people at town meeting are not going to walk up unless we have 40 of those around the room.
Oh, I see.
But it will have to...
People are going to be standing at the map.
Right. But I can tell you that there will have to be a map in the bylaw.
Yeah, okay.
But what you're saying is, is there any way to give general?
In text. So somebody knows, oh, from, from Hamilton Line to such and such is V2, and from here to here.
You would have to ask Council about how you can explain that, because I know there's a line between the exactness of a map and, you know, some other type of explanation. I'm sure you'll work it out, but that's what...
Right. And I'm sure Val probably has some suggestions that she'll be able to help us with on that, because it's, yeah.
I mean, because I think that if you, you know, if you say Weston Ab is XY vert, people go, oh, Weston, well, there's already businesses out there. Okay, that makes sense. You know what I'm saying? It's like...
Yeah. I know what you're saying, and I also know Weston Ab is really long, and it lands in three different districts.
Right. And so it's going to come down to if you, if you put that in the bylaw. Now, maybe the solution is there's an explanatory note or something. Because if you put generalities in the bylaw, that opens it up to
Misinterpretation.
Legal interpretation or misinterpretation in the future.
Well, I mean, it's, it's also possible that I can get each district and scale it down so that there's not a map with everything, but there's a map of this and there's a map of that, particularly for the village districts, because they're small enough. It'll be more challenging with the rural districts, but I think perhaps we can capture, because there are, instead of, so we're calling it all rural or all village. The V1 and V2 and V3 was a part of our process originally when we were trying to understand what uses people did and didn't want. But now there's just really those, the three village districts are distinct. They're separate from each other. They're not contiguous, but they're all have the same, we're not making any differentiation between the uses in them. So those three could be on eight and a half by 11 little maps that, that show exactly what the boundaries are, the way the other districts are. Well, the Canoma Point and the downtown district are in the bylaw like that now. And probably be able to do that with the rural one as well. The lower, the southern rural one is really wide, so I'm not sure how that would work.
Maybe they end up as attachments to the warrant with an explanatory note in the actual article. The article's probably also going to have to have the actual, the whole map, but it's not going to be that readable. That's what you've got to work through with Amy.
With Amy, yeah, right.
I have no questions. I've been following the process. I said, I've been following the process.
Yeah. And all this information is online on the planning board's webpage, like all of it? The use map, how the assessors code things, so that, that's all available. And I know actually people have been looking at it, because we've been getting some questions. So it's helpful.
Do you, BZ, do you have any questions?
No.
No?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
And if there's anything else that I might have missed, because there's so much to this, and my brain is literally overflowing, just let me know if you think there are other things that need to be pointed out as, as far, either in the articles themselves or, you know, as far as material to present at the forum. And then also, schedule-wise, the forum is, it's not a hearing, it's not anything official like that. So we'll have the forum on the 25th. Like I said, we'll be finalizing things on the 2nd of October, giving KMP those two weeks before our meeting on the 16th of October, where we will basically say this is final for you to have on the 21st of October. And then following that, on the 6th of November is our public hearing, official posted public, you know, publicized public hearing. Obviously, at that point, nothing is changing, but that is the formality for the warrant articles. And that's the time that the planning board will be taking our vote about whether we support these articles for town meeting.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Excuse me while I bumble my way out the door with my
You're fine.
...
I will make a motion to approve the weekly warrant and the amount of $2,188,115.67.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will make a motion to approve the minutes for the selectmen September 9th, 2024, open meeting and executive session.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We had a request from the Superintendent of Public Works to clear the brush between the transfer station property and the town's property at 30 Apple Street for emergency access purposes. This was brought to us as unanticipated at the last meeting, and I know we wanted to do a holdover in case there was anybody that wanted to join us to discuss it. And there's nobody in the room. I see that...
And BZ, you did not receive any email or anything, correct?
No, I did not.
Okay.
So we do have Janet Carlson on the line with us. Do you?
No, I mean, if, if nobody is...
If no one's reached out, okay. So do you, do you think I need to make a motion, to make this a vote?
Yes, since it's really the first time you're saying that that land is going to be modified, albeit in a, you know, temporary way, you're just cutting vegetation.
Okay.
I think so, because we might as well start with, you know, that, that tone whenever you're going to make a change.
Okay. So I will make a motion to allow the Department of Public Works to clear the brush between the transfer station property and the town's property at 30 Apple Street for emergency access purposes.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have two candidates for the appointment of the person to serve as the Essex Housing Authority tenant representative seat. And I know that I spoke with both Henry and Karen, and this is probably one of the hardest appointments that we're going to have to make.
I agree. Because I believe that both of them has, has positives and negatives. Well, I don't know if they saw any real negatives. They were mainly positives. Some of them, the positives were bigger positives. I did a very technical, am I ready to say?
Go right ahead.
Okay. I did a very technical thing and three, two different ways so that I could come up with the name, and I feel that Karen came to the top. And I think she seems excited to do it, and that also is very positive.
So I did not do anything technical. I simply had a phone call with each of them, and I thought they were both wonderful and so eager to serve the community and Shebeko Terrace. And I think they both would bring so much, by way of personality and just experience and time. I would say, this is one of the hardest appointments and decisions to make for me, but I, where my tiebreaker was, and nothing scientific, but I guess the thing that brought Karen to the top for me is that she has served on a lot of committees, and that when they found out that Irene Frontera was going to be leaving the Housing Authority, they asked Karen to be on the search committee. So she has experience with that there. So that also kind of just, it was one teeny point for me, but it is the point that actually broke the tie. So I am also in favor of Karen serving. So it sounds like we both are. I will entertain a motion to appoint Karen Frontera as the tenant representative for the Essex Housing Authority's seat.
Now, I will say one thing about Henry, is that he may be a good resource if we need somebody on the school building committee, if he is interested in a small portion of that. He didn't know anything about it, so it may be.
Okay. Do you want to second my motion?
So sorry, second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Brendan, will you tell us a little bit about the food safety inspection software?
Yes. So we're a member of the Eastern Essex Regional Public Health Coalition. The coalition is anchored by the Town of Hamilton, and all the personnel runs through Town of Hamilton. The coalition is now putting in place some food inspection software that all the various member towns can use, and it would be no cost, but they still need each member to authorize the use of the, of the software.
Okay. Do you have any questions, Alva?
I do not have any questions.
I will entertain a motion to allow the chairman to sign a no, no-cost contract for food safety inspection software from relevant systems offered by the Eastern Essex Regional Public Health Coalition.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the next one is related. The Department of Public Health, which oversees an ongoing long-term grant that runs the collaborative, or funds the collaborative, is asking for the inter-municipal agreement, or, I guess that's what it's going to be, to be more formal. And they're looking for that to be put in place by October 31st. So at one of your next meetings, I'll be coming to you with that agreement. But in order to review that properly, since KP Law, which is our town council, represents all of the communities that are in this collaborative, they had to go through a disclosure process. And I have a document here that the board could sign that would authorize joint representation for the review of this document.
How, what is the length of time for the IMA?
I think it's going to be for, for three years at a time, but I have to look at the draft again.
And does that specify whether Hamilton will always be the lead on that?
I think it does, because they're agreeing to be.
Okay.
But I'll, I can get that. Because you're going to, this is only to review it. You're actually going to have, and I'll get the answers to that. You're going to have the IMA in a separate vote in one of your future meetings.
Okay.
And I'll get the answers to that.
So I will make a motion to, to sign the consent document allowing KP Law to advise multiple represented communities with respect to the Eastern Essex Regional Public Health Coalition.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will make a motion to ratify the board's vote on September 9th, 2024, to appoint Nicholas Molinari to the position of probationary firefighter.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
He's already passed the quarry and the drug medical screen. That's why it's not conditional.
I will make a motion to vote to appoint Patrick Cronin to the position of probationary firefighter contingent upon drug, medical, and quarry checks.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will make a motion to vote to appoint Elizabeth Stade to the position of probationary firefighter contingent upon drug, medical, and quarry checks.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will make a motion to appoint Matthew Leveridge to the position of probationary firefighter contingent upon drug, medical, and quarry checks.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I will make a motion to sign all of the cover letters as listed on pages 2 and 3 for the one-year leases, category 3, 4, 7, 8, 10, and 11.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Brendan, do you have anything unanticipated?
I do not.
Okay. And then as reminders, the Board of Selectmen is scheduled to attend the planning board's meeting on October 2nd, 2024, at 7:00 PM in the Town Hall Auditorium to review an open space residential zoning proposal. The next regular Board of Selectmen's meeting will take place on Monday, October 7th, 2024, at 6:00 PM, 3rd floor of the auditorium here at Town Hall. And then the Board of Selectmen will attend the public auction of four properties previously owned by William Allen in the 3rd floor auditorium of...
I'm sorry, but only one can go, correct?
We can get posted.
We're going to post as a meeting.
Yeah, we're going to post. Oh, okay. I thought only one could go.
So that we can all attend. So that will be the formerly owned by the estate of William Allen, 3rd floor auditorium of the Essex Town Hall on Thursday, October 24th, 2024. The auction will begin at noon, but pre-registration starts at 11:30 AM. We, I can take public comments. We're still going to be waiting for the Finance Committee for a little while, but is there anybody online that has any public comment?
Just to print out for October 6th.
If you have a public comment, just unmute yourself and identify yourself, name and address, please.
Janet Carlson, 24 Apple Street.
Hi, Janet.
Hi. Hi, everyone. With regard to the DPW brush cutting between the transfer station and the 30 Apple Street hedge row, because there's such a rich wildlife habitat all around the field there and valuable trees and such, I'd like to suggest or request that the selectmen speak with the DPW and perhaps confirm that they only cut the width, the roadway width, one, one lane's width, a minimum amount of brush cutting as opposed to, you know, giving them free rein to cut all the way across. Is that something we can consider?
So we can certainly talk to the DPW. I guess we don't have the recommendation of how much they propose they need to cut, so...
I did speak with Mike Galley, and Mike Galley said that he, he would like it opened up enough for a 10-wheeler to get through there. You know, so a large, a large truck.
Sure. Does that clear it up, Janet? A large truck?
Yeah, absolutely. If that, that's what's necessary for emergency access. Yep, that makes sense. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Did, did you have a public comment? If you do, I'm going to ask you to join us at the podium and speak about six or eight inches away from the microphone. Please give us your name and your address.
Okay. Rick Marullo, 36 Apple. And we're here for the item about the brush cutting on the field connecting to the town property at 30 Apple. And I think I just heard a comment from Brendan saying that he would recommend to the DPW the width of a large truck.
The DPW actually already told me that that's all they're looking to do.
Okay. Well, that's good news. That's good news to us. Yeah. We don't want any more cutting there than we would like, just because, for aesthetic reasons. And we live on Apple, of course, so...
Did you have another comment?
That I, that answers the question. Okay.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I'm going to call a short recess. The Finance Committee is not joining us until... us until 7:30 and we've covered all of our regular board business. So Joan, if you'll go to Fade to Black, but for anybody joining us online, we will come back to regular session promptly at 7:30 to meet with the Finance Committee for financial articles that will be held at Special Town Meeting on November 18th. So please feel free to stay tuned, but we are gonna go to Fade to Black. Thank you, everybody, for patiently waiting. We now have the Finance Committee in the room. They had a 7:30 appointment, so I'm gonna ask Finance Committee members to join us at the podium. When you join us, if you could just speak six to eight inches away from the microphone so that people that are hearing us live can catch the discussion. Yes, please.
Sorry, my mic was strapped.
And I can tell you right off the bat that the selectmen discussed the warrant earlier in this meeting and there were six articles that they are not putting forward at this time. The fire department tanker truck, the council on aging van, the shellfish boat, the water and sewer maintenance budget line items, we don't need that. The, actually more than six, the two stabilization fund in the enterprise funds, one in water and one in sewer, and the general stabilization fund because I think it's already fully funded. So as we talk through, there's already a number of them. Unless anyone on Finance disagrees, we're trying to streamline some of the things.
No, we're right there with you.
So the first thing would be, do you want me to talk through what's left or did you want to present what?
No, we've only talked about some of these. We didn't get through the whole list.
So the first thing that's still on the list would be an ambulance for the fire department. That is because there's almost a three-year lead time to get an ambulance these days and that would be paid for out of the ambulance fund, which is, which money comes into from insurance companies when someone has to utilize the ambulance. And so that amount of money is, I believe, already there. I don't know, Michaela, what the current amount is in that account. Have you had a chance to look?
I can look.
I know that, I know that.
It's full, I think it more than fully funds this.
Yeah. We use 50,000 a year to help fund the operating budget for the ambulance, but the rest of the money, which far exceeds that, stays in the fund and it gets used to buy a new ambulance every time. Police cruiser, I know, Tody, that you asked the chief of police about what type of cruiser they were looking to purchase.
I did. Actually, I had a conversation with Chief Francis this afternoon. Chief Francis informed me that they are no longer looking to replace the pickup truck. In fact, they're using the pickup truck now in place of car two, which is a Durango, has been taken off the road with mechanical issues. So he is no longer seeking what they were asking for at the Tahoe. They are looking to replace car two with an in-kind vehicle, most likely another Dodge Durango. He does not have a quote yet for that, but he will get one for us hopefully within the week. And I think the good news on that is that some of the build-out equipment that you would have to have paid for a new vehicle can be repurposed from the old Durango into the new as long as there weren't body changes and whatnot. So some of those things will be repurposed.
So then the water department pickup truck with Plow, they're estimating 73,000 and that would come from Water Department, Water Enterprise Fund retained earnings or what we sometimes call water-free cash. Any questions on that?
Oh, the existing truck. Are they repurposing it?
They're going to, I believe, transfer it to the highway department, so it will continue to be used.
Okay. And I will have questions for Superintendent Galli on some of the other vehicles in the fleet so that we understand. We're trying to understand in each department if there's, there are vehicles, what the fleet vehicles looks like, what their age is, the mileage, how many miles they put on it a year, et cetera, replacement, because we're trying to get, build a schedule so that we understand, we better understand capital projects. I think right now the Finance Committee feels that we get information a little bit late and we'd like to be a little more proactive with our liaisons on that.
And the next is the library ADA ramp structural repairs. We got a quote that's 4,000 and something, but in case he gets under there and finds that there's actually more rot or more damage, we're recommending carrying $6,000. That can come out of the town, the Town Hall and Library Repair and Maintenance Fund.
And the Finance Committee at our meeting asked if we received one or two other quotes or if we could so that we knew that it was a fair number.
I'll try, but what we try to do is find people that are sole proprietors so we don't have to pay prevailing wage. I can tell you that if I had to go to a company that's not a sole proprietor, it's gonna be $8,000. So I can, but I'm not really sure that I know anyone else that I trust to do the work because we've used this individual several times. Some of the work was done at the senior center and he's worked out well for us. If you have suggestions for other sole proprietors, please let me know. Be happy to get a quote.
And who has done ADA compliant ramps?
Well, this is actually just rebuilding. The ramp is in place, the pitch is in place.
So you're not changing it at all? It's being exactly the same?
It's studs underneath the ramp that have to be replaced.
Stringers underneath are rotted, so just pressure-treated lumber that's underneath has to be replaced.
The next one we have in Town Hall and in the Public Safety Building and in the water filtration plant, hardware that helps connect a user to their desktop that is on the remote desktop server in Danvers. There is a new generation of hard, client connection hardware that's come out from the company that we use, which is End Computing, and would like to upgrade to that. The generation that we're currently using has been in place, I would say, for the last six or seven years. So we're, and that would be for, the $7,500 would be for 26 users, really, 26 devices, but each user has a device. All right. The water supply well funding. We have about $800,000 left in ARPA funding. We got about 1.13 million originally. The selectmen decided to put all that money into our water system and specifically the upgrade and modernization of the three public water supply wells that we have. The money was expected to be able to cover all the things we wanted to do. We went out to bid once, it came in too high. We went out to bid a second time after paring down the scope and it again came in too high. We are just about ready to go out to bid for a third time on this and we're confident that we've got it pared down to where the $800,000 will more than cover the much shorter list of things that we want to get done. There will probably then be a little of the ARPA money left over. The Board of Public Works is suggesting that there be a town meeting article to say for X amount more in town money plus whatever's left over in the ARPA money, we can get one or two bid alternates done while we have the contractor in town. We'll know exactly what the difference is because the third bid is gonna come in just before we go to Fall Town Meeting. So the question is whether you support adding town funds to whatever's left over in ARPA money to perhaps do alternate one or alternate two in the bid that's gonna be put together and put out very soon. Hopefully that gives you the background on it. And I don't know whether that's something you support or not.
And what's the, what's the alternative?
The alternative will be if we go out to bid, we get the base bid done and there's $130,000 left, we are allowed to spend that money on even town operations under the rules that ARPA has put forth. And then we would see that money obviously flow back in next year's free cash because, of course, we already have funding sources for the entirety of the FY '25 budget. So this would just be, and we could easily spend that money because the school district bills us for much more than that in a single month. We would just spend it all. That way, not a dollar of ARPA money will be, have to be sent back to the federal government. And when the commensurate amount of money comes out in free cash next summer or next fall, you'll be able to say, hey, that came from the ARPA money. And if at that time you want to direct it to a water project or whatever, you'll be able to make that argument. So that's the alternative.
Any questions?
What's the magnitude?
Join, Mike.
Brendan, is the, is it $10 over for these alternate scope projects or is it $10 million? What's the magnitude of this?
Our understanding is that it'll probably be over by hundreds of thousands. Okay. So let's say, so we have the 800,000. Let's say we get the base bid done for seven, there's 100 left over. But just to do alternate one, maybe it's another 100,000, right? So you're into it for 100 because you, if it's 200, you already have the 100 left over plus 100 in new money. Alternate two, if that's another couple hundred thousand, now you're into it for 300,000.
But you can choose alternate two and not do alternate three.
Alternate one, no, the way they're structured under bid law, alternate one has to be done before alternate two can be done.
But you can just stop it?
You could stop after alternate one. It's hard to say right now because we went out to bid twice already thinking that would all fit in and we were very surprised. So this, having the article on there would give you the flexibility. Let's say it was only 100,000 total to get both of them done because it was some great price. If you don't have that on the warrant, you don't have the flexibility to just nail it and get it done while they're in town. Because then you'll have to come back at another time and actually go out to bid again, okay, for the two pieces that you left on the table. So now you're gonna spend more money, go back out to bid. So, you know, it depends on how far off the market is.
Okay. Thank you.
So we keep it as a placeholder and we?
I think it would be a good idea.
Get our bids and then we make a decision?
Make a recommendation from there.
Very close to town meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
The next one is the Chibaco Lake study. So for several fiscal years running now, Senator Tar has been very helpful in getting legislative earmarks for studying Chibaco Lake, Hill Wife Brook, and the surrounding watershed. And in fact, there were, there were two $30,000 earmarks plus a 20, so that's 80, plus 7,500. So, you know, we're coming up on $90,000 worth of earmarks and we're told that this fiscal year we're getting another 20. So if that's the case, the Lake Association is interested in seeing whether the two towns, Hamilton and Essex, want to put more money into this project by matching the new earmark. The suggestion they're making is up to 15,000 for each town. I can tell you that we have heard back from one of the selectmen in Hamilton and they are interested in pursuing getting some money from their town meeting. The question would be, is it, is it 10,000 to start from each town or is it 15? Or is it anything? It depends on, you know, whether you have a recommendation on that. But this would just be money that would be used to match another earmark that we're getting and this time it would be for a comprehensive study in the lake itself. The other work was done on the Hill Wife Brook.
And, and again, I guess for the benefit of the Finance Committee, what is the benefit to the town?
Keeping the water quality in the lake to a point where it doesn't go beyond recreation because values on, of the properties on the lake, which there are about equal number of properties in each community, would plummet. Now, the town would still collect the same taxes plus 2.5%, but the devaluation would be spread out amongst the remaining taxpayers. So it does have a tieback to all taxpayers. You know, we're not at a point yet where the lake is anywhere near being not usable for recreation, but there have been toxic algae blooms that have shut down that in recent years. And what they're trying to do is understand the baseline, not only of the lake but of the, of the Hill Wife Brook, so that it can be managed appropriately and not end up in some kind of disastrous condition which with warming temperatures is becoming more likely. So there is a benefit. It all depends on how much, how tangible you think that is and whether you want to recommend it.
And this is still just a study? It's not?
Still just a study.
Okay, so no work, just a study?
Right. And the suggestion is 10 to 15,000. Now, you wouldn't have to come up with a number, of course, until it's read at town meeting and by then we'll know whether Hamilton's in for anything and what that number will be. Because maybe we get to town meeting and Hamilton says, well, we're not putting any money in at all. And then you might question whether Essex wants to.
And does this need to go to town meeting for Hamilton?
It would need to, yes. Unless they have some kind of other fund, you know, reserve fund, I don't know, but.
Could it be contingent upon approval of Hamilton's share?
I don't know. I don't know if that's the case. I think when town meeting votes, it's either you're authorizing money or you're not.
But when is their town meeting? Do they have a Fall Town Meeting before ours?
I believe they're having a town meeting tonight. I don't know if they're gonna have another one. And I know that's not on there. There's, they're just now beginning
Okay.
to speak about it. So we'll have more feedback, but we might not have a town meeting vote in our hands. So you might have to trust whatever they're saying or say, well, let's go for it in the spring or whatever. Just realize this earmark all has to be spent by June 30th.
Okay.
So going for it in the spring isn't gonna help.
Perfect. Thank you.
It's a long story, but that's what's in front of you. Okay.
So is it still possible that it may not happen at all?
We're getting the earmark no matter what. It's a question of whether or not the two towns want to match it to do a study that they're saying is gonna take a total of two years. And they think it's gonna be 50,000 a year. That's why they would like to see 20 and then 15 each from the towns because that gets them 50 for year one. And they would ask for it again next year. Is it, is it a, I'll ask the selectmen, is it an article that you at least want to keep on there for a discussion's sake at this point?
So I have another question before we go there. Has the town of Essex put any money toward this study?
No, it's all been state earmarks.
It's all been state earmarked. Okay.
We've done all the legwork and all the contracting and we've, we've made sure that the state money has been spent in a timely fashion and haven't lost.
We did the management of it, of any monies. We did.
All of it so far, yeah.
And so for me, about removing it or not, I, Peter is always kind of our environmental liaison and he has sat in on all of these meetings. I wouldn't be comfortable removing it unless he were here to discuss whether he thought that was appropriate for me.
So leave it on and you'll talk about it. Before the warrant's finalized, you can talk about it again on the 7th.
So, but help me understand and help Finance Committee understand. So it would be 10,000 each year?
10 to 15,000 each year is what they're asking for two years.
For two years.
So we get 20 and then we would have to put up?
15.
Even if it's 15, $30,000?
15 from each gets you 50.
For two years, what I'm saying.
Yeah, then it would be 50,000 again the next year.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
$100,000. 30 of which perhaps would come from Essex, 30 from Hamilton, and 40 from the state. That's the proposal. But we can leave it on there for discussion's sake at this point. Special purpose funds, so we have about a dozen special funds, stabilization funds, that we look to potentially put more money in, in the fall each year. 10 of those funds, the, the traditional amount of addition to those funds has been 20,000. And then we usually put 3,000 in the street lighting fund, which is a fund that builds up over time so that when we have to replace LED streetlights, which have a 20-year life, we have money to actually do it. It's not to maintain the lights. And then the other fund that we usually put some more money into is the fund that funds major vehicles because we pulled a lot of money out of there when we bought the ladder truck. And the question is if you're gonna start putting more money back in there. And the question is if you're going to start putting more money back in there, do you want to go more than the 20 that we put into? And I don't know if 20 is even a good working number for each of the funds that we usually do, but that's the traditional typical number that we've used.
And we'll look at that at our next meeting on October 3rd because we don't have the stabilization funds updated balances yet.
And we don't have the free cash number yet either.
Free cash certified. Additionally, we just had a discussion at our meeting about funding vehicle stabilization and what we actually need to look for and we're trying to take a little bit longer look, so we'll talk about that.
And then, let's see, I already told you that the water and sewer maintenance line items, we don't need those, so that's come off. Sewer grinder pumps, once we get free cash certified, we'll look at retained earnings in the wastewater department, wastewater enterprise. They're going to be looking for, I think, another $50,000, again, not from the general fund, so they can continue to make progress on replacing all the generation one grinder pumps with new. And they're pretty much there, but they need a little bit more. Funding, the Finance Committee Reserve Fund, I believe the only major expenditure so far this fiscal year was about $10,000 for moving the mooring blocks. And that can be refunded from either the dredging stabilization fund or it could be funded from the water waste fund or a combination of both, but it wouldn't have to hit the general fund. And it would get your reserve fund back to full strength. I don't know if you were looking to add anything beyond that or you're just looking to recoup.
Well, I think we, at least, at a minimum, we'd like to recoup. And then I think we're going to look at where we are in our town budget.
And then you could add if you wanted to.
There may be some need to add, but we did not discuss that yet.
And then the OPEB Trust Fund, again, every fall we look at this. We're looking to get to full funding. The goal there is to have an amount of money in the bank that generates sufficient interest revenue so that the town doesn't actually have to come up with anything on a year-by-year basis to pay for its share of retiree healthcare. And I believe our number is like in the mid 3 million somewhere. I'm not sure where the fund sits right now, but usually we try to put a healthy amount of money in and keep making progress on that goal. So we'll see what it comes up with, with the free cash. With respect to operating budgets, there's an article for that, FY25 operating budgets. We know the town clerk's office has had extra wage expenses because we've had to have temporary people in there and we've had to double up sometimes for training new people. We've had high turnover in that office. Also, the assistant town clerk line, because we at one point had the assistant town clerk as the acting town clerk or the temporary town clerk making the town clerk wage. And so both of those lines, we have to look at and we have to figure out what we need now that we've stabilized and we have a new town clerk onboard, what we need to get through the end of the fiscal year. The Shellfish Constable and the deputy constable wage lines also need to be increased or added to. Shellfish Constable has been out on medical leave, came back for a little bit and is back out, but will be coming back in a few weeks' time. But in the meantime, while he's been out, the deputies have been working the tides because he's not around, he's not able to do that, which means we've drawn down the deputy line because the Shellfish Constable line keeps getting paid out. He has full benefits, so it's not like he doesn't work, he doesn't get paid. He's getting paid as usual. We just need to refund or replenish the deputy line. We know that the town's electricity rate is going to go up sometime in the middle of December, so we need to put about a half fiscal year's worth of additional electricity money on any electricity line that's in the budget at a 35% rate of increase. The Conservation Commission has indicated that they possibly want to convert their, and this is all under that same article because it has to do with the budget itself, convert their wage line for the conservation agent as a town employee into possibly an expense line because they're thinking of not having a town employee anymore, but instead using a contracted consultant or contracted service. But the only way to do that is to have town meeting reprogram the money from wage to expense because we're not in the last two months of the fiscal year where we are allowed to swap between the two. We need a town meeting vote to do it. And I'm not sure yet whether they still want it, but they may, they may in fact ask for that. The General Stabilization Fund, again, I said we took it off because I think you consider it fully funded. 5% of around 20 million is around a million and that's where the fund sits. I don't know if you were looking to put anything else in it?
We haven't discussed that yet.
Okay, so pause. So leave it on for discussion?
Yes.
Okay. Unpaid bills, we have about $1,500 in bills that came late to the town. And whenever a bill comes in after the fiscal year is closed, it takes a nine tenths vote of fall town, or special town meeting, or four fifths vote of the annual town meeting to fund those and then they can be paid to the vendors. There is a possibility that we also have a small amount of money that we have to come up with for underpayment of social security, but right now, as it sits, we think we have enough money to cover the situation. But I wanted to put that on the radar just in case we find out when they do the final calculation, we need another small amount of money. Okay. What else did you have? Were there other items that I missed?
I don't think we have anything else to add, but one of the things that we just had a pretty robust discussion about downstairs is we'd like a more formal process of articles that people want to put, their financial articles on the town meeting warrant. For instance, we were talking about the ramp replacement. I think the Finance Committee would appreciate it if we saw the, something formal submitted by the department, what the expense is, what the scope is, the number of quotes that have been received or bids that have been received, a little more information in a little more formal way.
Right. With respect to that one, we did submit a quote through you.
I understand. It was just when we started talking about it.
Yeah, to formalize the process, yeah.
For each financial item, we feel like we're behind and we don't have a lot of information. So things like the cruiser, you know, would be more formalized, like we receive, I think, during budgeting season, I think we'd prefer it if we had some more formal documentation so that we're not...
Right, so we could start in August or something and go out to all departments saying, look, if you're going to have anything financial on the fall town meeting, you need this, this and this by this date. We've never had a process like that, but we could institute it very easily.
I think it would be useful for the Finance Committee.
Sure.
We feel like we don't have a lot of information. We're seeing these articles and some associated dollars and others without associated dollars. And I think it's the same kind of request, I think, that I talked to you about Brendan, with your tier one, tier two and tier three that select board uses constantly. If there were placeholder numbers on there and every time you slid something from tier to tier, you'd have a recalculation of an estimate of what that looks like so that it's a more meaningful conversation, at least for the Finance Committee to have our arms around what tier one is looking like.
But it's so hard because I know even us talking about these articles that are on the fall town, the fire truck's on, the fire truck's not on, we're getting a grant, we're not getting a grant. I mean, that's only been in the last four meetings that we've gone through a complete circle on that fire truck.
And we understand that. I think it's, I think we need to look at worst-case scenario and maybe we have a column that says a grant has been applied for, you know, so it's pending.
I agree, I agree, it should be a little bit more so that you know, arrange, here's what we think the pricing's going to be. But as you can see, like the whole water thing, we thought multiple times, we had enough, we could get this, no problem. We've got a grant, we'll go after this. And we've had three, you know, two rounds of bids that come up much higher than we thought they were going to. So it's, I understand what you're looking for, but at the same time, it's still going to be a moving target.
It will always be a moving target, Alva, until you get right up until the 11th hour.
Correct.
But the requests, the justification for the request, you know, what the scope is, you know, what vehicle are you replacing, how many miles are on it, you know, how long have we owned it? We don't even have that background information. So with our liaison work, we're collecting more data so that we have a better handle on things. This is, you know, in place of this, you know, one-hit visit before budget season, but in order for us to help with some of the capital planning and, you know, funding of vehicle stabilization, we were talking about, you know, do you start accruing for a new truck or, you know, do we, you know, we have the envelope system, right? We've got like a dozen stabilization accounts and, you know, Chuck laughed at us and said, I've never seen a town in our city who has this. And I said, well Chuck, we're old Yankees, we use the envelope method, you know, we like to save and pay cash for things. But I think we still want to be even better planners than that. So that was our consensus at our meeting is to request that if we could.
Yeah, we can, next time around, we can formalize it, work with the committee and go from there very easily.
That would be great.
Alva, do you have any questions?
Yes.
So my question Brendan is actually for you. On the water truck, the water truck ask, 73,000, and you said they're going to repurpose it to the DPW. So are they eliminating or adding to their fleet? Are they eliminating something older at the DPW or are they adding a vehicle?
He didn't say, because when we asked about whether the water truck could go to the Shellfish Constable, what I got back was no, because that's going to highway, but he didn't say that there was an old highway that was dropping off. I can find out.
So that was, that's my question, because then we're adding to the fleet, now we're talking about fuel and...
But also help me understand, this is the water department truck that has a plow?
Uh huh.
And is that necessary or is that, I'm trying to understand?
They plow out the pump stations, sewer pumps, well, the water pump, the well stations, they have to plow all of that out. They plow the water filtration plant, so...
Do they only have one pickup truck at the water plant that has a plow or do they have multiple trucks of plows?
Water department, yeah.
Water department. They only have one truck with a plow?
Then they have the truck with the crane on it, but that's a sewer one.
Which is the sewer truck, does that have a plow?
And that has a plow too, I believe, but that's for the sewer pump stations and anything they have to do sewer-wise.
Well, that was actually a water and sewer vehicle. They funded it 50/50 from the enterprise, the two enterprises.
So it's one and the same. The truck with the plow is for both. The one that they're going to put to, the one that they're going to put to highway.
Perhaps, but the last truck that they funded was a 50/50 and that's why they couldn't fund the grinder pumps because they used the money from, for that truck from the water department, from the sewer department and the water department 50/50.
Well, I'll find out, first of all, whether this truck that's coming out of, coming off of water, it would seem to me that it's, there must be a second truck that we're talking about here.
I think it's in addition to, yeah.
Right. I think this is a water truck that is coming out and going to highway. There is also this combo truck that they bought, but I think that's a different truck.
Right, that's a water sewer vehicle.
But I'm going to verify that.
And this, it says it's a water vehicle, but if they're replacing a pickup truck at the water department and that pickup truck is going to the highway department, what are they aging off?
That's right.
Right, that's my question.
Really, I want to confirm that the truck that's going to highway really is fully a water department asset. And also, once it goes, is there something that's just junk that's coming off of highway? Or is it adding to the fleet?
Right, because there was no request to add to the fleet because now we're adding a vehicle if it's not rolling off.
Yep.
In addition, it was paid for by water enterprise funds that came from the water users and is now going to the highway department.
Sure, but if you traded it in as part of the purchase, excuse me, of the new one, then you would have no benefit of it to the town at all. I think they think that it's...
I understand, but they do have their own retained earnings in each of those funds, so, you know, you're crossing, you're blurring the lines a little bit and we're trying to get our arms around, you know, understanding the enterprise and free cash there and how it's allocated. My other question Brendan, in the grinder pumps, the 50,000, was my understanding they needed 36 more grinder pumps?
They haven't given me an exact number yet.
Last year, when they couldn't fund the grinder pumps at an annual town meeting and they used the money for the truck, I think the number was 36 grinder pumps remaining to replace. What's the cost of those now, do you remember?
I don't know enough hand. I'd have to go down and look at my contract.
Yeah, I don't know why I thought it was $1,800, but at any rate, is it, are we covering the final slug of these and then have some on the shelf?
For 50 grand, I don't think so, if you needed 36 pumps.
I'm just saying, we should know that and that comes back to, the request should be specific when it comes in about, it's not just $50,000, it funds X number of grinder pumps at this cost. It would replace, you know, it would bring all of the G1s to G2, I think is how they talk about it, so that everyone's on the second generation and then we have X number sitting on the shelf or we don't.
Yeah, it's called the E1 pump?
E1, yeah.
And prior to that, they had some other brand that didn't work out too well.
Yeah, so...
Yep, so I will ask them, I'm still, I have asked them about that, but I do not have information on how many pumps are left and how much money they think they're going to want this fiscal year. Part of it is because they're waiting to see what their free cash comes back at.
Right.
So...
Okay.
So as far as equipment and, you know, even with the grinder pumps, you're telling us that those are not, there's nothing, an audit that shows every year, here's where we are, we've got, I mean, I'm sure that if we asked the DPW, they could say, yes, here's, you know, the grinder pumps, here's the, how many and where they're located.
Yeah, that's exactly where the information is.
When I met with them, because I've been their liaison before, they had to hen-scratch. They don't have that in a document. That's what we're trying to get to, having it in a document. I think somebody should have in a document how many, what the fleet looks like, you know, the age, the make, the model, the number of miles, annual mileage, you know, repair costs, replacement, you know, estimates, so that we have some sense of what's coming.
Yeah, and I don't disagree and I also think the same thing with the grinder pumps. Anything that's going, nothing has a lifetime and it all needs to have, you know, it's the same thing when you buy furniture for a school. If you bought it all at the same, if we bought all the computers at the same time, the chances of the computers all dying at the same time are very high and you want to be prepared for that. So I think it's the same. And I've worked at companies where they audited everything. They audited the chairs, they audited everything so you knew what the life expectancy of that. So I understand where the Finance Committee is coming from, but I also know that's a lot of work.
We're willing to help with the work, so...
Okay. Anything else for us?
All right.
Any questions from any of the other Finance Committee members? No? All right. We're good, thank you. So does the board, Alva, do you have any other questions?
No.
No? Okay.
It wasn't as early as I was hoping.
I will make a motion to adjourn at 8:10 PM.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Joan, you can go to black.